You're now live on YouTube.
Thank you. Welcome to our city council meeting, a regular meeting. It is Tuesday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and it is seven P. M. We are here on the second floor of the city council, or the Public Works Building in the courtroom.
Public Safety.
Huh?
Public Safety.
Public Safety Building, yes, thank you. All right, we're missing one council member tonight, so is she on Zoom, do we know?
Aaron.
Okay, so anyway, we can proceed, we can do business, so. I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone here that would like to lead us in that pledge?
I will.
Thank you both.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd also like to begin with an invocation or an inspirational thought. Is there anyone willing to do that for us tonight?
I can do that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this beautiful day. We're thankful for the opportunity to be here to discuss the matters of our city. We're thankful for our city, for the good citizens that live here, for the beautiful scenery that we enjoy. We're thankful for the opportunity we have this evening to discuss matters that will affect our city. Pray that we will have Thy Spirit with us, that we'll make good decisions, that we will have good discussion, we'll be able to be respectful of each other and each other's time. We pray for the citizens of our city, pray for continued rain and moisture that we need for our crops and our use. These things we pray for at this time in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ryan. All right, are there any declarations of conflict of interest with anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, our consent agenda tonight, we have the minutes of our city council work session of March second, two thousand twenty-one. We also have the minutes of our regular city council meeting and of March second, two thousand twenty-one. So council had an opportunity to read those. If you have, are there any additions or corrections? All right, also on the consent agenda, we have the bills and the invoice register for March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. That is one hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Any questions or concerns on the bills? Okay, also, we have items on the consent. Item four, Resolution zero-three-zero-five, two thousand twenty-one, approving an interlocal agreement with Utah County for administration of the two thousand twenty-one municipal elections. Also, item five, Resolution zero-three-zero-six, two thousand twenty-one, requesting admission to the firefighter retirement system, U R S. And item six, Resolution zero-three-zero-seven, two thousand twenty-one, approving representation on the Mount Nebo Water Agency. And item number seven, Resolution zero-three-zero-eight, two thousand twenty-one, approving an interlocal agreement with Utah County for victim advocate services. Any questions on any of those resolutions? Okay, can we do a roll call on this consent agenda? We need a motion. A motion, a motion on that? Have you looked for one?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Miller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilman Hathaway. Roll call, Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
And Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous. All right, public forum. Do we have anything, Aaron? Or anybody in the public?
Might I suggest that we go through the awards and then come back to the public forum?
I think you're a good idea. All right, we have some awards tonight, and we have Kay Tishner, and we'd like to recognize that for Tishner Ford. Kay, did you want to say something tonight?
I do, but I can't.
Could you come up to the microphone so everybody could hear it?
It's been a fun ride. We have really appreciated as a family and as family members from many years ago, the support of the city, the things that have happened, the fire department and their backup. I like your resolution, I want to know how I can get on that fireman's retirement. Think I got about twenty years in, so I ought to get something out of that. Don't think it'll happen. But we do appreciate, we hope that it will just continue to grow. We're encouraging the new people, we realize they have some latitude and where and how they locate, but they've indicated that they really want to stay here. If you know anybody who owns the property, they're having a hard time. They found people's property, but they didn't want to sell. So to my knowledge, they haven't purchased yet, but part of their agreement with Ford Motor Company is that they'll do what we didn't do, couldn't do, and so there will be a new flying facility, and hopefully it'll be in Santaquin.
Yep, we're talking with them tomorrow, so yeah, hopefully we can convince them to buy.
And they're good to deal with. We found that they're very, very agreeable. I brought just a couple little things, mementos, that I thought maybe, oh, I don't know how that one got in there. Oh, I didn't bring the right pictures folder, maybe. Anyway, I'll pass some of these around if I can find them. As some of you, most of you youngsters, only may remember this, but long before the freeway, back in the olden days, the old highway, Highway ninety-one and Highway six and fifty would come up Santaquin Main Street, and right where Judd's Automotive is now, was a circular, kind of a banked turn. So if you're going to Nefire or anywhere in Southern Utah, you took that banked turn and headed south on ninety-one. If you were going...
Did you take it at sixty miles an hour?
Uh, that's it, done at that. Yeah, I'll bet. And I walked the truck, do it once at about twenty that was loaded as bee hives, and he rolled. The fire department was called out, I remember, and that was long before protective gear. I remember a few of the local firemen, the man was trapped in the cab of the truck, and the bees weren't too happy about what had happened. And so the men, I don't know who came up with the idea, I was just a kid, but they put their wives' heavy winter coats on, and the women's hats that had the netting, and they pulled that down, tucked it in there, in their necks, and went to the truck, rescued the driver, and we weren't allowed to play outside for two or three days because of bees. Interesting, good times. This is a couple of these pictures. I'll start them here, and then you pass them around. This is not the very first gas pump that my dad had, but I can't find a picture of it. It was a manually operated pump, but that was some kid pumping his bike tire. I guess that kid is me. This is the home that we grew up on Main Street, and I think it's just changed hands again, one forty-eight West Main. We could always just look out the window of the house and kind of watch the gas station. This was after its second remodel and addition. Until this was built like this, we all worked outside at the time. Everything was done. We'd move all the tires and tools inside at night, outside in the daytime. Thank goodness those days are no longer with us. What else I got in this box here? Nope, nothing. A picture of our canyon, and I've been ready to go to the Forest Service and start raising a little cane because I was afraid that they weren't going to open it, but somebody told me to relax and cool my jets, that the Forest Service does have it on their agenda. I hope someone could confirm that.
Well, that's what they tell me, if we can believe it. They're telling me it'll be done by October this year, so.
Government don't lie, do they?
No, no.
But we thank you again for such a fine working relationship with the police cars, with the fire trucks, until the last one. What went wrong there? But anyway, it's been a joy and a kind of a thing that helped us to feel like we became part of the community. I know the girls have been so involved in some of the parades and things that have gone on, and we want to help as much as we can, but I'm not getting around much. But we thank you. We know this is not a real, thankful job. We know there's a lot of things that happen, and I've heard good and bad, but I haven't spread any of the bad. All I've said is, I've kind of been there a little bit, and I know what it's like. They're doing the best they can. We appreciate your talents and your abilities and the way that you've conducted. I was so appreciative that we even had prayer, and I know a lot of places are a little bit frightened and broken. Our Lord has blessings, but I appreciate that. I don't know if my kids have got anything or not.
Come on.
Well, tell me, spoon's in the air.
Don't go sit down. Don't have a good slide, anyway. Don't, don't go sit down, we've got something for you.
Come right up here, will you, Ken?
Here reminds me of my dad.
As long as there's no judge, you're okay.
We need a picture of all of the tips.
Oh, good, well, please.
Daddy died twelve years ago tomorrow.
My mom's been gone since two thousand eight.
Another one for the whole.
It is hard.
Yes. You won't break the camera. Just leave the mask on.
I think your mask will be adequate for that. Maybe next week we'll get one more. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Keep doing good things, but I don't care if you limit growth. Just a little bit. Grow up when there was two more.
Thank you for everything.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you.
See you, Karen.
Well, they're going to be tough to replace in this city. They've been a mainstay for a lot of years, and they're going to be missed, you know, even as a city, as we work through, you know, our fleet management and everything that way, maintenance and everything they've done for us, so.
And always willing to help with anything.
Yeah, well, yeah, prime example, a couple of years ago when they had the, we had the fires, the Bald Mountain Fire, and that, Chief Holson took a few of us on a tour of the fire. We went to Nefire and up the loop from that direction, and...
Norm caught the car on fire.
Yes, it sucked up and blew, and air cleaner, and anyway, the car was, it couldn't really, wasn't going to run. And Kay went up there that night himself, in the wrecker, and towed that thing back for the city, so. You know, it's just amazing. I'm sure there are many, many stories like that, too. I saw a post by Mayor Staley of Goshen, you know, the old wrecker that he was today thanking the Tishners for everything they've done over the years, and the old wrecker that he, he says, I was able to get that out, and it still says Tishner Ford on the side of it. And so, yeah, it affects a lot, they affected a lot of people for good, and we're grateful for them.
So is it appropriate to explain to the public exactly what's happening there? I mean, I'm not sure it was made clear.
Well, I was hoping he had something in the contract that kept him here, but apparently not. Blake Murdoch told me this morning that they're trying to make a decision between Payson and Santaquin. And anyway, we're working with the real estate group that's, does the real estate purchases for Murdoch Group, and...
I think just the announcement in general that Kay Tishner has sold the...
Yeah. Yeah, it is sold, and they've taken over as of...
Today.
Today, yeah. So if you go to buy a car, you're going to be buying it from Murdoch today, so. Okay.
And if anybody has some land in town that they...
Yeah, really.
Then contact the Murdoch Group, so we can keep them here if possible.
Yeah. All right, back to public forum. Do we have anything?
We're going to continue with the awards, correct?
If you want, whatever you would like to do.
Is Payson-Santaquin Chamber here?
They're not coming. We're just letting you know that their Payson-Santaquin Chamber Business of the Month is Costco, who provides cakes and other support to the Chamber for various events that they have throughout the year, and it's been a constant support to the Payson-Santaquin area Chamber, so they wanted to honor and recognize Costco Hotel Club.
Okay, thank you. All right, even though they're in Spanish Fork, they are a member of the Chamber here, so. All right. You want to do the mayor appointment then?
Whatever you decide.
Before we get into the public forum, okay. This past week, I had the opportunity to sit down with four of the five, well, three of the five, but I already talked to the fourth one, so. We went over their assignments, and we've made some changes, and so we'd like to let the public know what their assignments are and that way, and probably start out with myself. My assignments are being on the Regional Planning Committee, MAG, the Council of Governments, which is a county organization, COG, and the Community Development Block Grant Board, CDBG, I'm on that board. I am a member of the South County Mayor's Group, and I'm a board member of the Summit Creek Irrigation Company, and my assignment with the city is city administration. Councilman Miller is the mayor pro temp, and when I'm not present, he's a substitute member of the Summit Creek Irrigation Board. He's also a Recreation Board, Events, and Seniors Liaison to the Community Services, as well as a board member there, so that includes sports, recreation, and classes, as well as other things there. He is liaison for the Police Department, and he's a member of the RAP Tax Board. Council, if I miss anything, please let me, let me know, okay? Councilmember Montoya is representative on the, to the council with the Planning Commission, and she is ULCT, which is the Utah League of Cities and Towns Legislative Policy Committee Member, and the Youth City Council Representative. Councilmember Meacham is an alternate on the Water Board at Sunwa and Mount Nebo. He is a liaison for the Public Works Department and the Engineering Department, and he also works with the Payson-Santaquin Area Chamber of Commerce. Councilman Hathaway is the liaison with the Fire Department and the Historical Preservation Board, and is the new representative on the Water Board for Mount Nebo and Sunwa. And then Councilmember Bowman, I haven't had the opportunity to meet with her, but she is, works with the Library Board and the Community Services there, and I need to meet with her on the other two before I announce that publicly. So that's the new assignments and appointments there. All right, we're ready for public forum, right? Go for it.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and read the names. There was an iterative comment that originated from a Facebook post from Jody Reed, and I was, I think it was just eloquent enough that people wanted to kind of say it over. So I was going to just read the iterative comment and then read the list off the, well, first I'm going to list off the names of those who included that iterative comment, and then I'm going to go back and I'm going to read those unique parts of the comments. If, if their name doesn't come up again, that means that it was just a pure copy and paste, so I'll just go ahead and do that. So the iterative comment was, and I'll read that after I name the names, was from Pamela Colson, Patrick Drolinger, Paula Strong, Kelly Pratt, Kendra Orton, Janine Dean, Trevor Thomas, Jessica Eisenbarger, Zach Noel, and Hillary Fitzsimmons. So I'll read that comment that they all had, so it starts, "From what information I have access to, there doesn't seem to be enough progress by the developer on the two-hundred-and-thirty-three acre agricultural rezone, and this is in regards to the Great Cliffs development. This seems to develop another high-density R-ten P U D. This seems rushed. Wouldn't granting another extension give adequate time to both Santaquin City, its residents, and developer to come with a plan that both parties are content with and doesn't leave the city in a bind with potential for unmet safety and infrastructure needs?" So that was the comment by all of those citizens, that residents that I just named, and then I'm going to go through and read the parts of their comments that are unique. So it says, "Hillary Fitzsimmons, dear Mayor Hansaker and City Council members, is it really prudent for..." Oh, sorry, I missed the first part of the comment, I apologize. The first paragraph of that comment read, "Is it really prudent for Santaquin City to approve a nondescript development agreement for the Great Cliffs development? Why would you not grant another extension instead of approving some vague agreement that won't set expectations and hold the developer liable from the start?" Okay, so from that comment, we go to Zach Noel, who says, "Dear Mayor Hansaker and City Council members, please keep us in, as a resident of Santaquin City who lives on the East Bench, please keep us in mind with future developments. We currently live here and want to stay for many years to come. Please don't turn our beautiful city into an overcrowded mess like those just north of us. We understand the need and want for builders to build here, but let's not cast our pearls before swine, meaning let's not set up our city with terrible developments that make us look like an apartment-town home center. We want single-family homes, not high-density housing, just to have more tax dollars. Thank you for your careful consideration of this matter." The next comment is from Nikki Mcneff. She says, "Dear Mayor and City Council members, as a newer, as a new long-term resident, newer long-term resident of Santaquin, parentheses, we have lived here ten-plus years now and plan on staying here forever if possible. I have many concerns about how the city is changing, the most recent issue being that of the development of the property to the northeast of town currently titled Great Cliffs. I grew up in West Jordan and have personally experienced living in a fast-growing city. I chose to raise my family in Santaquin because of its location and small-town feel, which is going away at an alarming rate. We chose to purchase an older home for those same ideals. Yes, people need places to live, and the rate at which Utah County's population is growing, I understand the need for Santaquin to develop, to an extent. We are losing quickly the identity that makes Santaquin-Santaquin. Adding more high-density housing only impacts that identity and destroys it even further. There are many ways to keep a community's identity without giving in to developers and their greedy desires. Please vote against any moves to rezone and work with this developer for this part of town. The area is not structured for such infrastructure, and I am worried about giving developers too much too soon. Sure, they've made progress, but not to our satisfaction. They need to get it right, and if that means more time, then that's what it means." Next comment is from Jackie Larson. Jackie says, "In my opinion, I think it would be very unwise to grant the R-ten P U D. I would hope you would extend the deadline. We have enough high-density, narrow roads with no parking. Also, I would like to get some dog signs at Orchard Cove Park. People think the north side of my lawn by the sidewalk is their own personal litter box. It is disgusting and gross. I would hope a sign would maybe make people think about picking up their dogs' crap." Next comment is from Brendan Bowen. "Dear City Council Mayor, I read the development agreement for the Great Cliffs project and found it has very few protections for the neighbors and community. I'll enumerate just what I consider the most important few for brevity. Section two-point-one-point-three, mentioned to impact mitigation to protect nearby residents. Experience tells me that unless the provisions are enumerated and penalties and enforcement is included, the neighbors will not be protected. They will be told that the developer can do whatever they like, and it meets the intent of the agreement. We can read and there are, we can read and there are no impact mitigation stipulations in this agreement. What has the city changed that would engender confidence that the nearby residents won't be in a construction hell and have it called legal right-of-way, end quotes?" Section six-point-one-one allows this project, allows this project twenty years of construction impact to the neighbors. Why? This is a recipe for disaster for the good people nearby. We are on the south end, are still waiting for the frontage road connection after years of wishing we had a better language, and the Salisbury-Horton contract that wouldn't change to suit the developer at our expense. What prevailing need was there that serves the greater good in changing the zoning for this area at all? The sheer number of houses proposed will fundamentally, fundamentally change the foothills, traffic, functionality of the road, et cetera, and not for the betterment of the current residents. What is the purpose of zoning if zones are automatically changed when a developer can buy at one zone cheap and develop, cheap in parentheses, and develop and sell in parentheses, not cheap, in another? What makes Santaquin unique and what controls are in place to preserve what we used to refer to as our heritage? Such a vague, open-ended contract to govern a project this size, an impact to me is a stunning letdown. Have we learned nothing?" Next comment, Paula Strong. This is reading the unique portions of her comment, says, "Dear Mayor Hansaker and City Council members, keep Santaquin a community that we want to keep calling home. Yes, change is a necessary evil, but after living here for fifty-three years, I am seriously thinking about moving. When you make your decisions, please consider what type of community you want, a transient community or a community that stays and makes Santaquin the best hometown in Utah. Thank you for your careful consideration of this matter." Next comment is from Jeffrey Sitaway. He says, "Esteemed City Council members, various times over the years, we've had developers take actions that many residents have opposed. When those concerned residents have brought their complaints to the city, the response is often simple. They are allowed to do that. That is according to the development agreement that the city council approved twenty years ago. There isn't anything we can do about it. This is nearly follow, always followed up with the sentiment that we need to learn from the mistakes of the past and ensure we approve agreements that will be an asset to the city during its duration. The recently released memo concerning the Great Cliffs development is a blatant illustration that we have not yet learned that lesson. Approving a vague development agreement with the hopes that we can amend it later is a terribly irresponsible move. The memo states that only a basic development agreement has been prepared, and negotiations for the terms of the development agreement can be addressed in a future amendment. Unless that basic development agreement has specific limitations to the developer, what motivation will the developer have to agree to any future amendments? This act effectively dissolves any and all leverage that the city has towards negotiations. The deadline is March twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, to either approve the agreement or extend the deadline. If you thoroughly read through the agreement being proposed and honestly believe that as is, it will not cause a significant portion of our residents to complain about what the developer is doing within the next fifteen years." developer is doing within the next 15 years, then we implore you to simply extend the deadline. Hoping that possible future amendments will fix current problems with the agreement is dangerous. This will inevitably create yet another situation where the residents of the city will be told by city officials that their hands are tied by the actions of a past city council. And tells us that you're not thinking properly fulfilling the duties of your office. Thank you. And that is it.
Anyone else here that would like to? I don't see anybody. Be a part of public forum. I think a lot of the answers will come as we talk about this in the agenda. The Great Cliffs resolution here, so. Moving forward, do we have building permits and light, building business license report?
Yeah, Mayor Council, so before you is a, a building permit report. As you can see from the date, this was, this was created last Friday. We, we usually would generate that report the Tuesday, the, the day of our council meetings. But we, we've started to generate the report on Friday so that we can include this in the packet, so that the public can see it as they review the materials. And so we can, we can convey or portray this on the, the screen more seamlessly in the meeting. So this isn't today, there, there's been some permits that have picked, been picked up yesterday and today, but for now on, we'll do it this way. So as of Friday, right now, we have 119 total new residential dwelling units. As compared to last year, at this time, we had 62. So we're pretty close to doubling up what, what we've done at this point last year. That consists of, of 83 multifamily and I'm trying to read that from here, 30, single family. So. Yeah, the growth continues. Our new business licenses, we have just a couple. We have a beauty bar by Jessica LLC, owner is Jessica Keller, 715 North 350 West. It's a home salon. And then we have Summit Garages by Kyle Kenyon, 322 West Royal Land Drive. And it's, he does some garage flooring and cabinet installs and et cetera. So that's the business licenses and, and, and the building permits that we have to report for you tonight.
Okay. Anything for Jason? Do we need to yell at him or anything? Thank you, Jason, appreciate that report. Alright, new business. We have resolution number 12, which is resolution 0309, 2021, approving the Great Cliffs development agreement. Is that you, Jason?
Yeah. So Mayor Council, on November 20th, 2018, the city council conditionally approved a rezon for a property on the north, northeast corner of the city. At the time of that action, proposed development referred to as Summit View Communities was being contemplated by Mr. Steve Larson. At that time, the council was encouraged by the conceptual ideas for that development and saw that this development would help address the scar on the, the land there from the old assumption mining operation. Based on the vision of the, for the development, the city council decided to rezon the property to R10 with a planned unit development or PUD designation. With the condition that a development agreement be prepared, negotiated and approved, the purpose for this was to, to give Mr. Larson the reassurance that he could start making investments into geotechnical work, engineering, planning, et cetera, without the fear that the time and money spent would be wasted. During the past three years, the geotechnical work has been done. There's been additional plans and ideas that have been explored. And then additional property has been acquired by Mr. Steve Larson. The name of the proposed development also has changed and it's, it's now referred to as Great Cliffs. All of these occurrences have complicated the negotiations and the terms of that development agreement, thus causing the need for the deadline of the conditional rezon to be extended twice. The next deadline for a development agreement to be approved is March 10th, or sorry, March 20th, 2021, which is, is a Saturday. Instead of asking the council to extend the deadline again, a very basic development agreement has been prepared so that Mr. Larson can secure the zoning from that original conditional rezon that happened back in 2018. This proposed development agreement only provides the zoning, which was offered two and a half years ago, and it makes them subject to the provisions of Santaquin City Code. Now, there, there's been some questions and we just heard in the public comments and then, and the concerns from those comments, they've, they've expressed that this development agreement is vague. We understand this perception, but believe the proposed agreement being considered tonight is in fact not vague because all the requirements for development point to the regulations that are in Santaquin City Code. Other development agreements that have been viewed as vague have provided details on some aspects of the development, but not on other important development attributes. This aspect is what has created the vagueness. Again, staff feels comfortable with administering this agreement in compliance with the provisions of Santaquin City Code. So. Yeah, I think that's, that's the, kind of where we're at with this and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, do you have any questions? On this?
I guess one of the questions I have, not necessarily a question, but a comment, why, why do you think that the, the citizens are so vague? Why do you think that got out that it's so vague, Jason? What's the?
So this, this is a very basic and we have Brett Rich, our, our city attorney here that could probably speak to it as well. But as we've, we've been working with Mr. Larson over the, the past two and a half years and particularly the last six months, we've really dived into the negotiate, the terms of the development agreement and negotiating that. But there was a, an original draft that was brought forward that had a lot more detail to it. And, and there was a lot of things that, that just weren't going to, to work for the city. There was a lot of waivers that were, were asked for, there was a lot of exceptions to our code that were asked for. And there was, there was some, some differences that we had with, with the applicant. And we never really could, could get to a spot where both, both sides could feel comfortable. As we got closer to this deadline, we felt like it was more important to, to, to take care of the, the zoning that had been conditionally rezoned from, from back in 2018. And so therefore, in order to, to get something that was going to work for both parties, we just wanted to memorialize what that, that zoning that was, that was conditionally rezoned would be. And so that's why there's not a whole lot of details. It's, like I say, it's basically expressing the zoning that, that they would have and then referring to Santaquin City Code for, for all the, the details for what that development looked like. Now, could something happen in the future with an amendment where there could be details? Absolutely. And, and it's our understanding that the developer has the desire to continue those negotiations. But, but with the deadline that we had here, it was felt that it was best to try and, and just work from the, the, the basics of, of that conditional rezon. Tie, tie it to the, the provisions that are currently in our code and then work from that point on.
Okay, go ahead. So Jason, can you explain, explain that comment where in the future, the amendments that can be made and the developer wants to address those? Explain the process and a lot of the comments were directed towards that. Why would the developer want that? What, what's the benefit for the city, right? Explain the process on that side, please.
Yeah. So, so I guess one thing to, 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 to consider was, was if you were to look at the, the zoning map that's on there, that was from the original conditional rezon, there's, there are certain parcels that are part of that, that conditional approval. Like I said, he's, he's since acquired more property and he'd like to, to have that as part of this development. However, those parcels didn't, did not go through a full legislative process where a public hearing was held, planning commission made a recommendation. And so there's a lot of work that would need to happen and that I, that Mr. Larson has indicated that he would like to have part of this, this bigger development proposal. So that's, that's one reason why he would want to come back and further negotiate so that he can have those things be a part of this, this, this bigger development. For, for the city, you know, in the past two and a half years, Mr. Larson has actually shared his vision for this development with, with the council, with the planning commission, DRC. He's even taken it to the, the, the old recreation board. It's now the community services board, but back when it was just recreation, he, he wanted to, to show his plans and ideas for, for all the bike trails and, and the amenities that, that were associated with, with recreation. And he, he was seeking a lot of feedback and, and frankly, a lot of the ideas that he, he conveyed to those, those different public meetings, he received a, a lot of feedback that, that he was, was going in a direction that the city was interested in seeing those things come in, become a reality. So he wants to, to continue to, to work on that vision and, and include things that the city wants to have. Obviously, there's a quid pro quo in this whole process where, where certain amenities that he provides, there, there would be density bonuses that could be associated with that. Again, the development agreement that's being up for consideration tonight doesn't get into those details, but it does give them the bare bones requirements that come with a, a standard PUD. And so our whole code would apply and, and as was mentioned, we feel really good about, about having that because we're comfortable with our code. Sometimes we get into, to the vagueness and sometimes we get into problems with, with other development agreements when we have specifics mentioned in the development agreement, but there's other things that maybe weren't contemplated that, that have a direct correlation or a debt, a direct impact to, to some of those unique aspects of a, of a subdivision. So this, this actually is, is probably more complete than, than a lot of development agreements we have because we already have the code language that's all there. It already spells out everything that we, we generally have with developments. But it, it might be in the best interest of the city to, to, to consider and, and look at future amendments so that we can continue to build upon and improve upon that vision that was originally presented to the city.
Okay. I'd like to ask legal counsel Rich to come up. I could see a few comments in the public forum that he was smiling, I could see his eyes smiling and address that. And then the comment about how do we think that we can amend this? Do we have a right to amend this development agreement?
Well, development, development agreements can be amended, but that has to go through the process. And any amendments would come back to the council for approval. Let me say, I guess what I was smiling about, I, I think that there might be some misunderstanding about what this process has been. Developers typically in the development agreement want to acquire, the legal term is vested rights. They want to have enough detail in that agreement that gives them rights beyond what they would normally guarantee, be guaranteed under the zoning that's approved. So the city can't go back on that. So they have a right to say, this is what's in the agreement. We are vested in these rights and we've got a right to this provision. One of those is typically densities. They want a higher density than what they might be entitled to under the base provisions of Santaquin City's code. That was the case as I understand and as I have read the, the agreement that had been proposed in this situation by the developer. They wanted a higher density. They wanted a number of things that staff, I think collectively, was not prepared to say those, we haven't seen the evidence that those things will not be detrimental to Santaquin. So I think this, this agreement that's before you tonight came forward because staff collectively was not comfortable that they had enough information to say what the developer wants as vested rights is going to be for the benefit of Santaquin. There simply wasn't enough evidence to make that determination. There were also some, some things that the developer has, has felt quite strongly about that I have told staff I would not recommend to staff or to you as a council. I don't believe that some of the provisions that were proposed were in the city's interest. So that's why you've got the agreement you've got. This agreement is, is kind of the starting point that we'll use with a lot of development agreements. And then we do look at what information has been provided from there and what the legalities are, direction, things are going in the development community and then make recommendations. We can recommend to the council that yes, these are things that are, that will vest the developer with other rights as they go forward with this development. But in this case, we have stuck pretty close to that base agreement, which really just puts that back into city code. City code does provide what, what developers can do as a base in these zones. It isn't just relying on what's in the agreement. The agreement says you're governed by city code for those zones. There are some, for example, there are some mechanisms by which they can get some greater densities, but that's charted out and specified quite clearly in Santaquin City's code. And so if they follow that, then there is a map where they can establish what kind of a development they want to have under that basic zone. Or they could come back to the council and say, look, here is more evidence to say this is what we would propose. We would like an amendment based on this data that we have and present to you showing that it will be for the benefit of Santaquin. That is a possibility, but it is something that comes through, through the council for approval. Now, the zoning that, that Jason was referring to, some of the property didn't go through the, it wasn't acquired by these people and wasn't part of the original proposal. So it didn't meet the statutory requirements. We, we could not include that legally in a development agreement tonight. All we're dealing with is what the council had specified almost two years ago, that there is a basic zone change, the zone change to R10 with a PUD designation and with a commercial aspect on part of that property. So it is that base zoning that staff has presented as a recommendation. And my understanding is the developer has agreed to that they have what the basics of what are included in that zone. And this would give them the right to develop within those parameters as a base and whatever entitlements or whatever abilities they have through what's in your existing code to increase densities or to have some, some degree to affect the development. So does that answer questions or happy to answer any others that you have?
Basically that it's bare bones. It gives away nothing except for the base zoning. And if they want something, they have to come back and ask you or a future council. And when they do, they come with, this is what we're willing to get for this is what, what we're willing to get. But at this point, it is just a bare bones, basic, point-to-the-code development agreement, vanilla with nothing special and no special provisions given to the developer.
Yes, it's, it's saying, look, we had the direction two years ago, the council approved the zoning subject to a development agreement. We weren't comfortable, but we had enough information to make a recommendation as far as further vesting. So it has really, it has the base rights that come with the zone that the council had already in essence approved, subject to the agreement.
So unlike other developments agreements of the past where it had already given things away, there's really nothing that staff at that point could have done. In this particular case, you haven't given anything away with this development agreement. Hence, the developer is incentivized if they want to make any changes to come to you. There's nothing giving, given to them in advance except for the base zoning outlined by the council two and a half years ago.
That's right. It, it basically is an agreement for what is the base zoning.
So that, and that takes care of all the, all the concerns of the safety and the infrastructure and Santaquin's not ready for this and Santaquin's not ready for that. It has to meet our city code, which is working for our entire community, right? In order for it to be built over there.
They have to meet every obligation of our current existing city code.
So do you, you've, to summarize, do you feel this is in the best interest for Santaquin City as a whole?
I think the decision on the zoning was made two years ago. The decision of the council two years ago was we are going to approve a change from the existing zoning to the R10 with a PUD overlay and commercial. So looking at it from the standpoint that that decision was made two years ago, we're really starting at that point at the base and saying, you can do, you, you have that zoning and you can do what is allowed in city code, but you've got to follow city code, code in the development for that zone.
And Councilman Hathaway, you may feel uncomfortable because what you're used to seeing is a development agreement that has all sorts of layouts and plans and promises and give and take and everything. This one doesn't have that because we haven't given anything and they haven't given anything. It starts it at the very zero point that can build on in the future. And you, as a council member that's going to be here for at least the next two years, right? We'll see whatever proposals come back, and we'll have the opportunity to weigh in at that time. But, this is just the vanilla base. It does not have anything added on.
Because we weren't prepared to make the recommendation that the very specific agreement that the developer had proposed was in the best interest of Santaquin. We just didn't feel we had enough information to make that recommendation.
And I agree with all of that. My only thing is, though, is wouldn't this, if we was to approve this, though, doesn't that now basically start the wheel forward? And even though there's going to be negotiation down the road, I feel we'll have lost some of the negotiation already, though. Because you're not going to turn around and tell them that you can't do it at all, right? So, once we pass this, we're already committed, I think, to this future. But, I'm also looking at it from the safety issue and the project being so long and the impact of the residents. Once we start down that road, we need to understand that what these citizens are saying is legitimate.
Absolutely.
And the question why is, is once, I mean, he has the right to do it and he owns the ground. I understand all that. I'm just saying, once we start down that road and we get into the negotiation, who and when is any of it? What happens when he doesn't follow those rules? Who goes back and makes the fixes and changes? Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So, that's my concern is, is it's always developers start doing things and, "Oh gee, we better go talk to them." Does that make sense? Where's the, I guess, is there going to be any teeth in any of this, or you know what I mean?
So, here's, that's, what you said is absolutely 100% correct. And I would argue that taking a step down that road isn't tonight. It was two and a half years ago. Two and a half years ago, the council took that step, and then the developer took the opportunity to do the geotech and the engineering and the design. So, that step has been taken and has progressed over that period of time. What the council's doing tonight is solidifying what the council would do, has really started many years ago, two and a half years ago. But, you're doing it with an absolute base. And so, where's the teeth? The teeth is in the code. Normally, the teeth is in the development agreement because you have an exception and then we have to try to enforce it. Some of the comments that were made here tonight were that certain provisions were given and granted, and we didn't have the teeth to really go in and enforce it. And maybe we should bolster the development agreement to have teeth. So, in this particular case, we're not giving anything and we're not getting anything. It's straight to the code, and all the teeth is in the code. And therefore, we feel really comfortable with it. Now, when they come back to do an amendment, they would be saying, "This is what we're willing to give." And then, that's the point where you'd say, "Okay, this is what we're willing to give back, and here's the safety provisions that we want to put into the agreement to ensure that you, Mr. Developer, are doing what you said you're going to do." That comes at a separate phase. And the issue that we really are running into is that we have the decision of a past council being now enacted by a decision now. And we don't want to perpetuate that into a future council making a decision as well because now we're two councils, right now we're one council away. In the future, it could be two councils away. We want each council to be able to make their decisions on the best information that you have without having the strings, if you will, hanging on you from the past. And so, this solidifies and creates that solid foundational base.
So, in 10 years, Dave, when you're here and we're not, if he comes to us, you can make what the decision what's best for the community at that time, right?
Correct.
At that portion. So, that's what's the best part about this, is it allows each council at that correct time to make those choices. Because you're 100% right. We're just going back to when we allowed this. Even if we pushed this off and extended the deadline or whatever it is, we would just hash this all out and then bring a bigger thing together. He still can get the base. He would just come in with, "Here's what I'm wanting. Here's what I'm giving."
You're exactly right. And if the alternative to extend it out, you would hash all that out, right? But, let's say you didn't agree and you didn't want it. It would come back to where we are anyway, right where we are today. So, that's the starting point. It would be coming back because of the actions and the approvals that were previously given.
So, thank you. That answers the question of why we doing this tonight when we could extend the application again.
Okay. Anything else for me?
Any other questions for Brett?
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions for staff?
Well, I had some questions the other night after reading the agreement. And I appreciate staff and Brett taking the time to answer my questions and meet with me. And just like has already been said, you know, we could offer another extension. That's one of the options that we have tonight. But, it seems to me like that would be kicking the can down the road and coming back right to where we are now. And, you know, maybe some would say, "Well, you know, some of you may be up for reelection this year. This wouldn't be a time to vote for something like this when you're up for reelection." Well, I will guarantee 100%. I do not make decisions based on being up for reelection. I shouldn't be here if that's how I make decisions. I make decisions based on what I truly believe is best for Santaquin City, whether I'm up for reelection, whether I decide to run for reelection or not. And nobody should be sitting here if they are just making decisions based on whether or not they're going to run for reelection or what they read on Facebook. And I want to make sure, though, that I understand a couple of things. So, first of all, we know that in the developer's big plan that he presented, that every person sitting here said that they liked and were in favor of, that they wanted to see that happen, that they thought it was a good idea. We know that in that plan, there are some units that are multifamily. However, PUD does not equal multifamily, correct?
Not, not.
A PUD does not have to have multifamily in it.
That's correct.
So, again, if this is approved tonight, we are going on what is already currently approved and legal in our existing city ordinance and code.
That's correct.
Right? Okay, so, and then, traffic construction. We've had issues with that before, so that is a concern. And I do hope that the developer is aware of that. And I, what can be done better and differently than how that has been handled before? I mean, I know we talked and talked and talked to the developer, and they talked and talked and talked to the truck drivers. But, traffic on and off of Highland, what can we do? What can we put in place that will mitigate those impacts better than what we've done before?
Well, we've specifically brought that up with Steve Larson in multiple meetings and expressed the concerns. I know Dave was there with me. When we expressed the concerns about Foothill Village and what we wanted to make sure the existing residents here, I know that doesn't answer your question, but we have brought that up with him previous, so.
He would have to follow all city code, but the key difference is, the one that we were talking about, that it was so impactful, and it was. It was very impactful, and I'm very excited to report on the next agenda item about that specific issue. But, that one, basically, because, and this was now apples and oranges here. You're comparing two different things. This was a decision that was more than 20 years ago with an annexation and approvals that were given without requiring a frontage road to be in. In this particular case, in that particular case, they had to drive through a residential neighborhood to construct until such time they connected the south, until such time they put in a fire access. And then, at 150 homes, they paved it, and now the frontage road is going to be coming through. This particular case, they're not going through a residential neighborhood. It's not going to have the same impact. They will be accessing 198, a UDOT highway, until they'll have to not only follow our code, but they'll have to follow UDOT requirements as far as egress and ingress onto that highway with any kind of truck traffic that they may have.
Okay.
But, it's not, they're not going to be going through with big trucks in a residential neighborhood.
Okay. And can we just specify, sorry, Nick. Can we just specify that Highland north of Main Street is UDOT Road?
Correct.
Highland south of Main Street is Santaquin City Road.
Correct.
Okay.
And you could even say that south of Main Street is Highland Drive. North of Main Street is, I'm sorry, 198.
And it's now Highland Drive.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then, let's see. I also have a note here about, because I had talked with staff about, about lack of detail in the current, or this development agreement that we're considering tonight, lack of detail on density and open space and amenities and impact mitigation. But, I am, I am very reassured that the way that the agreement is worded and written, if it's approved, the developer will, again, follow what is currently legal in our codes and ordinances, thereby not binding a future council so that if the developer does say, "Well, this is in the code and ordinance, but we want to do something different," they have to legally bring an application for an amendment before whichever council, whoever is on the council at that time, that the amendment is brought.
Correct.
And then, that council at that time will make decisions on whether or not they approve the amendment and think that that is a positive thing for the city.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Betsy, if I may, one thing that might be a way of explaining this is developers come to me and talk about how to draft a good development agreement. My advice to them is to stick to Santaquin City code requirements as much as possible. A lot of development agreements, they almost create mini-codes for that particular development. And juggling all these multiple codes and different provisions and different developments gets to be tricky. And like I say, we spend more time on anything else on our city code and what those provisions are. Therefore, those are the best provisions to apply to developments. Once we get away from that, and there's times where that's appropriate because there's unique things in each development or unique trade-offs between the developer and the city. But, each time we do that, it complicates things a little bit and it makes it a little bit harder for us to enforce those provisions in that development agreement. So, like I say, this one is actually probably something we're more comfortable with than anything, at least at this point in this development negotiation because it goes back to our code, which we spend more time on than anything else. And it's consistent with most of the city in how development is handled.
Okay, so, let's just create a scenario here. If this is approved tonight, and then, once the developer gets going on the development and they want something that is different than the code, and they come to you and they say, "Well, we want to do this," your bottom line is, that doesn't meet code, period. If you want something different, you have to request it from the current council, whichever council is sitting in place.
That's correct. It needs to go through a full process in and of itself.
Every single time.
Any amendment to this is going to be considered by the council, and until such time that the council and the developer agree on those terms, then it's just going to be the standard Santaquin City code.
What's already in place.
Which is what this development agreement articulates.
Okay.
So, is it safe to go back, or is it safe to assume if we step back and compare apples to oranges? If we would have had an agreement like this that stuck to Santaquin City code 20 years ago, wouldn't that have been much better for Santaquin City residents, Santaquin City staff, Santaquin City everybody involved?
Yes. You would have had to have water looping, and you would have had to have two access points. You couldn't have had more than 10 homes off two access points. Our code is very restrictive, and following it to the T is a culmination of many issues brought by many residents over the years that have been codified into code so that we can protect our residents going forward. Every single time we enter into a new experience, we put that into our code. In fact, I would say, over the last two, three years, there's been at least a dozen to two dozen restrictions in our code that have been put in. I don't think we've relaxed our code at all. There was a period when we relaxed it in 2007, '08, when there was a downturn in the economy. And everything since then has been requiring more garage space, more parking, curb gutter and sidewalk, more aesthetics to the outside of buildings. We could go through, and I think we have gone through, every single action the council has taken over the last two years to make it more restrictive. But, the problem that you run into is that the developments you see coming out of the ground today are really the byproduct of a council from 2007, '08, '09 timeframe easing those restrictions. Now, someday in the future, you might have a downturn in the economy, and it might dry up a lot of development. But, that's going to be the ramifications of the decisions that have been made for the last two or three years and going forward to tighten up those restrictions. It's an ebb and flow with every community, and every community is facing this because everyone wants to protect their identity and their heritage, and we respect that. We absolutely do, and every change has been trying to incorporate that to preserve our orchards, to preserve our community. The best way you can do that is make people follow the code.
Yeah, so I think the explanation just, it answers a handful of questions that were read by the public right there as well. So, I think this would have specifically helped a ton with the Foothill Village situation.
Sorry, our purpose in saying that is not to be critical or to be, you know, to bag on past councils. Obviously, as you know, councils are put in a lot of effort and do the best that they can. But hindsight's 20/20, and there's a lot that we can learn from past decision. And it's just, it's just the nature of growing and learning from the past. And so, yeah, this is, even recent history is, I think, you know, a conditional rezone is something that the city wanted to give to the developer so that they could do the geotechnical work, so that they could swallow and fathom how this development would work because it was an old mining site. But, you know, moving forward, a conditional rezone may not be the best because we want to have the details worked out sooner than later.
I wholeheartedly did agree. The council of 2007, '08, '09 timeframe made the very best decisions they could have at that time based on the issues that we're facing. You're facing an entirely different thing. Back then, they didn't have hardly any building permits. Now, you're getting 430 last year. It's just a different environment. And so, the issue that we're really trying to face is, let each council make the best decisions it can for the issues in front of it at that time. Right now, you're facing a decision that was made two and a half years ago.
Yeah, so now, all the concerns, we'll read them when we look at the minutes. And if they're not addressed by the code, and it's something that Mr. Larson and his team is going to potentially propose, then we address it and make sure our residents' voices are heard at that time and make sure what's best for Santaquin City.
Yeah, and I agree. I think each individual member of council and each council as a whole, I would hope makes the best decisions possible based on the information that they have at the time. And like you say, hindsight's 20/20. It's easy for us to look back and say, "Why the heck did they do that?" Right? Somebody 10, 20 years from now might look back and go, "Why did they make some of those decisions?" Because the situation is going to be different. Our circumstances today are different than it was in 2007 and '08. And so, I think that's an important point to remember, that whatever is decided tonight, each person will make the decision that they believe is right based on the information that we have now.
Any other comments? It's a thing.
Time's up.
All right. If there is any more comment?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I may make one more. So, Councilmember Montoya pointed out something in the draft that maybe could be tweaked a little bit. Again, we used a lot of the language for this development agreement from kind of the base development agreements that we start with in negotiation with developers. But, there's a, in 2.1.6.2, it says that all single-family homes must meet or exceed masonry and siding material standards previously allowed in developments located on the property. Obviously, there's nothing that's been developed on the property yet. That probably is some language that was left over from a previous draft. But, all that would need to change in that to make it. But all that would need to change in that to, to make it, uh, uh, accurate in, in the context of this development agreement would be that it say all single-family homes must meet or exceed masonry and siding material standards, uh, provided in Santaquin City code.
Thank you.
Maybe the only question we haven't addressed, maybe if it was just my question, is if this is denied tonight, what's the next step?
Well, um, denying is, is a challenge because it has been approved two and a half years ago. Uh, the most appropriate step would be to approve or to, um, uh, extend the, the negotiation period. Uh, those are the two steps because of the previous action from a previous council.
Okay. All right, any other comment, questions? If not, I would look for a motion.
Oh, fine. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, um, approve Resolution zero three dash zero nine dash two thousand twenty-one, approving the Gray Cliffs Development Agreement with the provision that, um, the statement about building materials be corrected and clarified in the development agreement.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
A second by Councilman Meekum. Any further discussion on this resolution? If not, Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
And Councilman Hathaway.
No.
Okay. Councilmember Bowman is on Zoom.
Oh, and Councilmember Bowman.
I can see my picture up there behind Ben's head.
Yeah.
I will say aye on this one.
Thank you. That was four one on that vote. All right, moving on to item number thirteen, Resolution zero three one zero dash two thousand twenty-one, approving the Highland Drive Canyon Road Intersection Construction and reimbursement agreement.
Mayor and Council, this is one that I'm ex- very excited to, um, share with you and the, with the community at large. Um, with great empathy, I, I do wanna express, uh, regret to the residents of Ninth South and Center Street and Pole Canyon Road for the, the construction issues that have been facing them as, um, the Foothill Village, uh, development moved forward. Um, it's certainly no fault of the current developer and no fault of, of the current elected leaders or the current staff. Um, in that we were all inherited this from more than twenty year, twenty years ago when, when this really was an annexation with certain development rights that came through. But through effective negotiation, um, um, of the past, uh, it did require that a frontage road go in to have fire access to ensure that there was fire connectivity. Um, with a gravelled road up to, uh, the point where a hundred and fifty homes were, were, um, were constructed. And, um, once a hundred and fifty homes were constructed, it was a paved road going out and the city kept its word to that extent. And we're very excited because, um, uh, in the last council meeting, the city council approved the land acquisition from uh, Mr. Jamie Evans and that property has closed and it is in the possession of the city now. It is the very last parcel of property needed in order to realign that, um, that intersection and allow for a much more safe, nearly perpendicular intersection that'll tie Highland Drive from the north exit to the south exit. Um, you, you, you just don't understand how hard that is when you consider that we had to have land acquisition from egg protection areas, we had to have engineering. We acquired land from UDOT, um, in order to, uh, kind of maneuver that thing around in the background. We, um, had development agreements with, um, multiple developers as it's changed hands to get to where we are today. Um, but we're very thrilled with, uh, the fact that, uh, the current uh, developer's landholding company has agreed to continue the construction that they're already responsible for. And finish off that entire intersection beyond the scope of their development boundaries and do so on their dime and allow us, the city to pay them back, um, pursuant to the terms of this agreement. Um, they've received, um, four bids and the low bid is before you as well. And so we're, we're thrilled to see that, um, one, the land has been acquired and two, that the road will be constructed and the ground breaking in the spring as, as promised by our elected leaders to their constituents. So, uh, tremendous amount of effort and great appreciation to our city staff, our engineering, our legal as well, um, as, as community development and everybody involved in trying to make that a success. Um, we do apologize to the public and, and, um, and empathize, but, um, the day, um, the light at the end of the tunnel is getting brighter and brighter. And so that is before you for your consideration. And I will bring it up so that you have the mo- the resolution in front of you. Any questions that you might have?
Any questions, Council?
I asked mine in the work meeting.
Hooray, yeah. Uh, my comment is hooray, finally. And like, like Ben said, there are a lot of things that had to come together and they finally did. And, uh, kudos to staff for all that they do, did there.
Yes.
And, uh, so I look for a motion.
Now, the developers did not have to do this, just so you know. And we, so we really appreciate them and their efforts as well.
Yep, yeah. Kudos to DR Orton as well.
Mister Mayor, you just called for a motion, correct?
Yep.
Mister Mayor, I will, uh, move that we approve Resolution zero three dash one zero dash two thousand twenty-one. Approval of Highland Drive Canyon Road Intersection Construction and Reimbursement Agreement.
We have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second it here.
Second, uh, Councilman Miller. Any further discussion on this resolution? If not, Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
And Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Thank you. That was unanimous. All right, discussion possible action. Item fourteen, Harvest View Drive Sewer Installation. Well?
Is that you? Yeah, well, Mayor and Council, uh, we, we discussed this a little bit in the work meeting. This is, uh, a part of the Harvest View Park, the Harvest View Sports Complex that we have down in Summit Ridge. This is, uh, just one piece of the puzzle. We are out to design right now as you, uh, approved this a few, a month or so ago to get the design of the parking lot and the pickleball courts, the promenade, drainage, access, et cetera. Uh, this is just one piece of the puzzle where we need to get the sewer installed before the park is finished being designed because they're building a road there. We, we, uh, came across this and looked at different options and thought about trying to run it through the park and down through the promenade and to the north end of the soccer fields. But that's a significant, uh, difference in length. And we have a, a competitive bid before you to have that work done, uh, for not to exceed a forty-seven thousand nine fifty-five. It's about five hundred feet of sewer, a lateral and an extension to, to go into our property as well as the property to the south to service that, uh, twenty-two or plus acres, et cetera. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for that.
No questions? So, do, I understood you norm to say that, uh, it will also help the developer to the south of that.
There's, uh, again, as we've looked at the soccer field design, that was kind of in a, in a vacuum. But as we look at the full thirty-five acres, there, there are twenty-two acres of private land that are south of our thirty-five acres where the soccer fields are. And that currently, th- this would be the only access to sewer that they would have. There is sewer over by the road tracks, had a significantly higher elevation due to having it been installed before the, the ground was mass graded and the, and the ground elevation was brought down. So this would be the access to the sewer for that twenty-two acres to the south. And there could be some, uh, recap for these funds from a development that could potentially go in there. Correct. That's correct, Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that. So, so if they develop that, they can repay for.
A portion of it, that's correct.
Good, good work.
Okay, I'll, uh, any other discussion? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, approve, uh, the contract, award the contract to Mitchell, Mitchell Escavation to construct the new sewer in Harvest View Drive in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Meekum. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jen.
Jen.
I said aye.
Oh. You're too fast for me. Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. That was unanimous. All right, item fifteen, Orchard Hills, uh, Phase Two Preliminary Plan Approval.
Okay, Mayor and Council, uh, as was indicated, this is a, a, uh, uh, perpetuation or a second phase of the Orchard Hill town, townhomes that are, are west of Orchard Hills Elementary School. Uh, the only thing that's, that's maybe a little bit different about this from what's existing there is, is the, the building that has frontage on, on Highland Drive is anticipated to have five commercial units on, on the, the main floor. Um, those, those units are, are, are not very big. They'd almost be considered like incubator slash home office type of, of, of settings. But, uh, you know, it, it could be interesting to see what, what people use those for and, and could be a small shop, could be, you know, something like that. But there, there is some commercial that's a part of this, uh, that would, that would be marketed with those individual units. Uh, and, and that, that'll be interesting to see, uh, how, how, uh, uh, how that unfolds. Um, this, this property, uh, is, is proposed to, to have nineteen townhomes in those five commercial units. Um, and, uh, this, this, uh, development received DRC and Planning Commission recommendations, uh, the end of last year. Uh, they took, took them a little bit of time before they were ready to come to council because they, they were working through the design of the building. Um, and, and they needed, uh, Architectural Review Committee to review that before it moved forward to the city council. That did get approval. Um, maybe if you could pull up the rendering of it. Uh, this rendering shows what, what's anticipated to be, uh, there. Uh, there's, there's a vicinity map. You have to scroll down a lot. There you go. So this, this is a rendering of, of pretty close to what was approved. There's a couple of different changes and a couple, uh, differences in, in that rendering that, that I'll point out to you. So, uh, for purposes of this, this side of the elevation, the, the only difference that the ARC, uh, uh, the only difference that the, the ARC discussed in their approval was that the green colors be more matching. There's, there's kind of a lot of colors going on there. There's a few other, uh, conditions that they made, but th- they're not really seen on this, this elevation. But the, the, the biggest thing is, um, on Highland Drive, there's a little bit of a, a, a grade difference there. So there will be a retaining wall in front of it and then between the road and that retaining wall, there would be, uh, um, an asphalt path, a meandering asphalt path that, that will be along Highland Drive. Now, we, we would love to see that, that path, uh, be connected the whole way along Highland Drive. Uh, there's, there's some undeveloped properties that, that they would have, uh, be required to do that uh, as part of their, their frontage improvements. So this, this will be a small segment of that, but, you know, the, the development that was referenced earlier in Foothill, uh, there will be that, that meandering asphalt path that will be along there. And so this will create some good, uh, opportunities for, for pedestrian access and for, for, you know, recreation and, and people to, to jog along that or ride their bike or whatever. So, um, this is, this is what that, that, uh, building facing, uh, Highland Drive will look like. Uh, other than that, it's, it's, like I say, kind of a, a perpetuation of, of what is already there. Uh, the townhome units will look the same and, um, I don't know if there's much else really to say. And it, it, just the, the DRC and, and Planning Commission recommendations, uh, were unanimous. And, and now it's here before the council for, for your consideration. I guess the only other thing I'll say is, is beyond this point, uh, all they would need for them to, to, to start construction would be to get final approval from the DRC. Uh, a lot of the work that's done there is just buttoning up some of the final touches on, on things and, and getting the plat ready for renovation at Utah County. So, uh, with that, I'll, happy to answer any questions that you have on this.
Any questions, Jason?
I, I guess I should mention, we also have Kevin Olson who's joined via Zoom. If you have any questions for him.
Okay.
I asked mine in the work meeting.
Okay.
Mine isn't so much a question, but I would, I would like to discuss and see what the rest of the council thinks of the no parking on Highland Drive. Cause I, I, I feel like I've just assumed redline it right as soon as that's built. And because that Highland Drive, after what I've seen with Iceberg, what happened there, I, this is just a safety issue. When all the cars were parked along Highland Drive trying to get in there.
Is there gonna be enough room that cars could park in front?
And, and that's something that DRC would be happy to, to review as we look at the final plat is to see after those infrastructure improvements are put in, how much extra space is there? If there would be extra space for that, you know, we could consider it. Or if, if the direction is that you want it red, uh, red curbed, no matter what, we'll, we'll take whatever direction you give us. But, uh, if there's, there's not enough room there for parking, there won't be enough room there for parking. And we'd probably wanted to put signs or do something there to, to, to indicate that there's no parking. So, uh, that, that is, that is a great point that was brought up. One thing I did miss and, and sometimes we forget that some of the, the good things that come out of this. But, uh, and, and Mr. Kevin Olson could touch on this if he likes to. But on, on the corner of that property, there is a, a billboard there. And it's anticipated that that billboard would be taken down and not replaced with, with anything else. So this development would get rid of a billboard that is along Highland Drive. And, and I think that could be taken as, as kind of a, a victory.
Good.
Yeah, we, we'd be happy to look at it, uh, and if you indicated, the council indicates that one of your, uh, as far as your motion or have approval, if that's the way you go. If we need to look at that and put red curb, we're happy to do that.
Okay, any other questions?
Like I, like I discussed, I brought this up in the work session about the parking. And like I discussed there, um, i- if I were to make a motion, I would want to ensure that either there is enough space for parking or it's red curbed and signed no parking. So how much is considered enough?
So from a technical aspect of that, you, you typical travel lanes are, are somewhere between, between ten and twelve feet. And then a parking is somewhere typically between eight and nine feet. So we would look at that and see where that falls with the current travel path or the current northbound, northeastbound lane, uh, direction of travel and, and go off of that. You, you may have noticed in some areas of town, we've done that on other developments where we've given enough room to curb and gutter on, on, for instance, high, uh, uh, multifamily that's gone in that has been required to put curb and gutter in. We put it far enough out so that there would be parking there and we're not obstructing the travel path.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the way we would look at that is to make sure we have both directions of travel covered sufficiently as well as enough room for an eight or nine foot wide, uh, parking area.
Okay.
But again, that the corner of it, right at the corner would be red curbed anyway because it's a, that's in our, in our, uh, site triangle where we have the safety issue that Dave's talking about.
Right, for view. Well, um, Highland is deemed in the future to be what kind of a road?
I would have to look at that, but I would guess that it's gonna, gonna be a collector road if I, if I were to.
That's what I thought.
Since I've looked at that particular road in our master plan, but I would anticipate that being a collector road, just knowing especially now where we're gonna be connecting it all the way through. That would definitely go to a collector, I would say.
That's, that's what I thought. And I, and I remember discussions at some point about w- when it's widened, having a direction in each way and a center turn lane. So, um, maybe we can ask the developer if, you know, if he feels like there would be at least the room that you are describing.
We, we would just look at it through the final design process and look at it, at that point in time. Again, I don't recall, uh, at this point in time, the plan's in detail enough to know whether there's enough room there or not. But we could look at that as we go through, again, according to your approval of direction and direction.
Okay. Well, I think for the time being, I would be more comfortable with red curb and signage as well. Just because I know how fast the cars drive on that road. I did see a, an officer out there, um, clocking speeds today, so I was glad about that. So thank you, police officers.
So just to clarify, is it conditional based on if there's space or is it red curb regardless?
Well, I'd like to get the opinions of others too.
I, I, I think the, the thing that's been repeated multiple times, I think, review it in DRC. That's what your responsibility is. If it works, then allow the parking. If it doesn't work. Red, red curb it and signs.
Yeah.
Yeah. As, as we progress forward and the road changes, then we can address that as we go forward.
Yeah.
If there's room for it, cause I agree with you a hundred percent. We've seen these developments that they're pushed back far enough that you can have some parking there and, and not have it be a safety issue and be just fine. So I think
Yeah.
DRC take care of it and let's go forward.
Thank you for that clarification. If you wanna put that in a motion, one of you, that would, that would be.
Yeah.
Go ahead with your motion, Beth.
Are you calling for a motion?
Yeah, I'm calling for a motion.
Okay, uh. Okay, uh, I move that we approve the Orchard Hills two preliminary plan. Um, with the contingency that, um, parking, s- street level parking be addressed. And, um, if DRC deems that there is ample space for safe on-street parking, that that be allowed, if there is not, then the curb be red, red painted, um, with signs posted.
On Highland Drive.
On Highland Drive.
Okay.
Sorry, this might be a non-issue, but, uh, in the memo, the motion also is to include all planning zoning and engineering red lines to be addressed.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so.
I wa- I was not, I, I apologize, I was not reading that in front of me, I just made all that up out of my head. Isn't that fantastic?
Yeah.
Go preschool teachers. We rock.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Hathaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Why she's fast on that aye, like I can't hear her.
I think she was. I don't think she's there.
I think she, she dropped off.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, any opposed, say nay.
Nay, oh, sorry.
All right, it was unanimous, thank you. All right.
So for clarification, that was.
That was a yes, I heard you say.
You already said ayes.
Yes, that was four ayes. All right, uh, report, City Manager Benjamin Reyes.
Um, I just, I just wanted to, um, clarify for the public. Um, when we advertised for this meeting, it was for an online only and in last meeting, we did talk about in the work meeting that we were intending to gather again in the month of May. We just really wanted to clarify that, that we opened this up specifically because of the request of, of the Tishner family to come in and we wanted to honor them for their long service. And so it's very nice to see all of you again and be in your presence and, uh, be able to rub shoulders and associate once again and, um, it's my belief, Mayor, that, that we're gonna perpetuate this, at least in this hybrid model where the council.
And we're progressing, let's continue to be together.
So basically, we're engaging the hybrid model and we're very optimistic and hopeful we can have the full, uh, public back to our meetings very soon. So, um, and I don't have anything else to report unless the council has any questions for me.
Pretty lucky. Uh, Assistant City Manager, Norm.
Yeah, as you can tell, we've been very busy with, uh, getting the Jamie Evans property wrapped up and, and working with that and the agreement for the, the constructing that road and, and reimbursement, et cetera. Uh, just a lot of projects still going on, we're working on city hall design with the, with the CMGC contractor and the design engineers and, and architects. Things are going very well there, you've seen a recent rendering on that, I think last meeting, we, we looked at, at renderings and floor plans and that kind of stuff, so things are moving along and just lots of, lots of projects going on right now, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Nothing? You're doing good, Norm. Rock, rock the boat this last few weeks, good. Community Development Director, Jason Bond.
Yeah, just a couple of updates for you on the planning efforts, there's not a, a whole lot new to report on the, the USU agritourism vision, Harvest View vision, Santaquin vision, all of the, the work that they're doing, there's not much new to tell you there, but they're just working diligently and trying to wrap up their final projects and we'll, we'll look forward to their, their final presentations in, in April. Um, in regards to the General Plan Committee, uh, Imagine Santaquin General Plan Committee, um, this is what they're officially called. Uh, nothing new much to, to report there, the, the next committee meeting for that will be next Thursday. Um, so I know our, our consultant, uh, people plus place, people in place are, are, are working hard to, to start uh, putting materials together for the first public, uh, public meeting and, and surveys and, and, and information that way. Uh, in terms of, it's, it's been referenced a couple of times, but we have a, a fifty thousand dollar grant for, for looking at our active transportation plan. Uh, that's something we need to, to get going on, I, I need to, to work, uh, on the contract with, with the consultant that's been selected for that project. Uh, so that's, that's something that's still pending, but a lot of, it's anticipated that a lot of the, the, the work and, and the, the meetings on that will be done at the Planning Commission level. Um, so, uh, we invite anybody who's interested in trails, in- interested in active transportation to, to look at those agendas and, and come and participate in those Planning Commission meetings, we'd love to hear their feedback and, and their, their, uh, their thoughts on, on trails and, and, uh, uh, active transportation related items. Uh, last thing to report and, and, you know, this might be something that, now that we're meeting, uh, more in person, but just want to report to you that we, we do have a new part-time administrative assistant in the Community Development Department. Her name, her name's Camille Moffett. She started just, uh, yesterday. And so we're, we're happy to have her and, and she'll, she'll help us, uh, uh, provide more coverage in the Community Development Department. She'll primarily be over business licensing and, and will be helping with, uh, development applications, but she also is gonna cover uh, uh, with building, um, department-related things and, and, um, deputy recorder responsibility, so. Um, yeah, new employee there and, and maybe when things get back a little bit more normal, uh, we can invite her and, and introduce her to you, so. That's all I have to report.
Okay, any questions for Jason? Thanks for all you're doing with Utah State and, and getting that done, now that, uh, committee, you say they meet again this Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Hmm.
Are you gonna continue doing that on Zoom?
Yeah, I think the plan is to do that on Zoom, that, that'll help with the, the thirty-plus committee members, uh, availability and, and their, their own personal schedules. Uh, I think also it helps, uh, the consultant because they, they have a lot of, uh, survey-type, um, technology that they use to get good feedback. They, they do do it in person, but I think under the circumstances and, and people's schedules, it's, it'd probably just be easier to, to stick with that, so. If something does change it, then we'll, we'll communicate that.
Okay. Have a comment, Ben?
I, I did, I have one more thing, because there's been a, a rumor going around the community that maybe I wanted to, to set straight if I, if I could. Um, so Santaquin City, uh, there was a news report on, uh, KUTV News with regard to the proposed relocation of the Utah-Juab County line. And, um, and they came and interviewed Todd Rowley with the Red Barn and they came and interviewed me and uh, although I hate being on television, it was, it was good to get some positive information out about our community and want, and our desires, your desires to preserve the agricultural, um, heritage of our community and the orchards, if you will. And that really leads to the USU work and to the general plan work and everything that you have going on, including your changes to code. Um, but what we're looking at doing, um, is, is fir- first of all, there's a presentation I put together and I shared with the Utah County Commission. If you look up the Utah County Commission for their meeting, um, a week ago, a work meeting, uh, week ago Wednesday, this past Wednesday, uh, I'm a- about an hour into that meeting and I give a full presentation to the uh, county commissioner, so if you have any questions about what, what we're looking to do. Um, but basically, it would be moving some of the, so Juab County is, is basically shaped um, to follow the ridge line and part of the development and the hills is, um, spans into Juab County and there's twenty-four future homes that will be divided by a county line. We want those homes and that entire neighborhood to be at the same school district and be in all, in the same, um, just the same neighborhood would be in the same county. But with that, we're really looking to move a small portion of, of the property between I-15 and the railroad tracks, um, to the south part of the Summer Ridge Parkway into Juab County for three, three specific reasons. One, we would really love to invite Utah State University here someday in our future um, to have a small presence, a lifelong learning center, maybe some classrooms, maybe, um, a fieldwork, uh, lab, um, an extension office, maybe even a, a large foyer with an interpreted signs telling people where, where all of our great agricultural venues are.
And the county even expressed interest in moving some of their facilities or departments into a facility like that that is rural, based in services for rural area.
That's exactly right, but, um, but that USU facility and they're, they're non-committal, they haven't said anything, but one of the, one of the obstacles to them even considering is that they need to go into a non-Wasatch front county, Juab County meets that standard and so moving the county line at least removes an obstacle. It's not a guarantee that they'll come, but it removes an obstacle. But two other things is we really want to get some economic development dollars that are intended for rural Utah. There's the Governor's Office of Economic Development that is trying to create twenty-five thousand jobs in the non-twenty-five wa- uh, counties that are not on the Wasatch front. And there's CIB funding, um, Community Impact Board funding that has used, um, mineral rights for the benefit of rural Utah. And Santaquin is part of rural Utah. We, we don't have the strong tax base that the rest of Utah County has. Um, and yet we don't get the benefits of being in rural Utah, so we're talking about a very tiny change. But the rumor that has come to us many, many times is that all of Santaquin wants to go into Juab County and that is just not the case. Um, I think there was at one point, maybe twenty years ago, some talk about that. Um, Councilman Hathaway is shaking his head, he remembers that.
There was.
Well, old stories maybe have popped back, we're talking about a very small change to that end, to support agriculture and that's really what we're trying to do. Um, with every effort from USU to the general plan, so sorry to take so much time, but I just wanted to clarify and remove any questions from the public on that.
Okay. Any else from staff? If not, Councilman Hathaway, any report?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, basically, just basically for the, most of the citizens of Santaquin. Um, there's, uh, you know, it's easy to get on social media and, and make your comments and stuff, which is fine, I mean, I ca- I can take the comments and the staff, everybody can. But I, I just wish that they would somewhat educate themselves first. I want them to know that the staff of this city does an awesome job. You guys go way above and beyond. I think the citizens need to understand that you guys put in hours and hours of time for keeping this city going. And I, I just wish that they would, you know, to keep away from the, the we're taking bribes from developers, because we're not. It, it's nothing to do with that. So just understand, these guys, the staff does an awesome job and this council does the job, the best job they can too, so. And I want to say that your presentation on the news was awesome. And most of all, I want to thank Ben and the mayor for letting us come back to this.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the comment, too.
Councilman Mikkum.
Yeah, I back up what Councilman Hathaway said, very well said. Appreciate all you guys do, uh, keeping things rolling the way they are. Um, it's appreciated. Um, Jason Callaway was here tonight reporting for the Public Works and some good things happening there. Uh, they just do a great job, if you see them out when they're doing their work, just thank them, because they, they go above and beyond every day also, uh, so just thanks to them, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Montoya.
Okay. Um, so first about the, the change in the county line. Um, I, I talked with Ben about that, um, about three years ago, right after I was elected, right? And I wasn't quite sure what to do about it, um, but the reason that I, that it occurred to me in the first place was exactly what Ben described. And I talked with Senator Okerland, um, t- just over two years ago about the, the same things, that Santaquin is a rural community, but because we're in Utah County, we, we don't, we don't qualify for, for the rural grants and funding that other communities do that are, that are similar in size and, um, economic structure within agricultural base. And, um, so Senator Oker, State Senator Okerland and I had a really good conversation about that just over two years ago and I brought that information back to Ben and, um, Mayor and I really, really appreciate them following up um, and not forgetting that idea or pushing it off to the wayside because there are a lot of potential benefits from just even having a little more of a sliver in what is still considered a rural county. And, um, I have a, I have a very, very strong passion for distance education and, um, and a very, uh, strong belief that distance education improves and changes lives, especially for those in rural Utah. And, um, and Santaquin agriculture is just, um, just a prime opportunity, um, to partner with, uh, an, an institution of higher education, so. Um, I first brought that up about eight years ago and I'm glad to see that that isn't being forgotten either. So I appreciate that a lot. Um, okay, U-City Council, upcoming events. Um, they're helping with the egg hunts, um, Easter egg hunts and, um, we are going to, we've arranged a demonstration by the fire department. And, um, Chief Lind is, um, gracious enough to share his experience being an intern at a fire department, um, when he was in high school and that really helped set the course for his life and his career. Um, now as our, um, as our full-time fire chief. And so he's gonna share that and do a demonstration with the kids and so that should be really, really fun. And, um, we'll see if anybody gets wet. And, um, and then the police department, Chief Hurst and Corporal Glenn have also been very supportive and they're going to do kind of a very, very, very mini, um, academy with the, with the kids in May. Um, when we can get outside and things like that too, and so we have some really exciting things coming up, they're gonna do service projects in the summer um, around town and at parks and tennis courts and things like that. So we're excited about that. Um, and the general plan, uh, my favorite part so far is, is hearing directly from the residents. Um, and, um, just listening and seeing the thoughts and ideas that are shared, coming directly from them and I just love that, so. I appreciate being able to, to participate in that as well.
Thank you. Councilman Miller.
Okay, uh, real quick, so community service is doing really well. John, uh, gave me a list, a really long list of things they're doing, so I'll try to summarize this real quick. Uh, the summer camps registration for youth and teens is now available, this was, uh, last week, so. Uh, new camps coming up this, this season are teen escape, baseball pitching, all-sport, um, ultimate frisbee and cheer. Uh, John, Shawna, Joe and Eric are like doing some, they did, they attended a officiating, um, clinic with an NBA official, so, so they're learning and progressing on that side of things. Um, seniors, I'm sure Mayor's gonna maybe talk about this, uh, seniors launched, a hundred and thirty people were served. Um, a hundred and thirty-one, if you count Mayor, did you meet?
I ate.
A hundred and thirty-one, with the mayor.
And my wife.
Well, a hundred and thirty-two, I apologize. Uh, so all that stuff's going really good, if you have specific questions, let me know. Community Service Board, we meet, uh, on Thursday, the eighteenth and we will be touring, uh, parks to get some of the members, um, more familiar with what we have to offer for our staff, or excuse me, for our residents. Uh, RAP Tax Committee meets on the twenty-fourth of this month. We're gonna just discuss, uh, follow-up on, uh, you, the money that we spent last year on the RAP tax. Uh, we meet, we meet again then in May, the, so, so, let me back up. So we meet on twenty-fourth to discuss what we, we did last year. Applications will open shortly thereafter and then we meet in May to discuss the new, the new projects that are being applied for and whatnot. Um, and then, uh, I think that's it, police department's doing well. Administrative staff is down, uh, to a part-time employee, but everyone is doing well there and they're in the new vehicles as well. And then, uh, just making sure that you guys caught, uh, uh, Jackie Larson requesting those signs. Dog park, dog issues, or park park.
Clean up your whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, look into that, see if we can get some signs posted.
Would, I have a follow-up to that.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to look into, um, how much it would cost to, uh, to ask Public Works, um, to get some of those little, um, doggie bags dispensers?
Yeah, we considered that and we are looking into that.
In the parks, okay.
In all of our parks.
In all of our parks.
Not just in specific ones.
Yeah, yeah, and the thing is just to keep them stocked. So that people have something to pick up. Yeah, yeah. And the thing is just to keep them stocked, so that people have something to pick up the doggy poop with. Thank you.
It's called their fingers.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. Alright.
That doesn't work for me. Sorry. That's not gonna work for me.
And get rid of your dog.
I'll make sure to bring you along on the walk. Because you will be the designated poop picker upper.
Alright, uh, let's see. Basketball court, Norm, where were you at with that? I know I signed some.
Yeah, there, we have the contract in place. We've got a notice to proceed that's going to them tomorrow and we will be scheduling a pre-con on that. The anticipated schedule that they've indicated to us is that they would prep and pour in April, May timeframe. And then it has to wait a certain time to cure before they can put the surface on it, but the, the current timing right now is that they will have this, the, the whole thing done. And surfaced in time for Orchard Days.
Great. Uh, I received an invoice from Summit Creek Irrigation. Did you get it?
Yes, I did and, and it's being processed.
Alright, I just wanna, alright. Don't pay it till the last day. I didn't say that. Alright, UDOT, there's been some questions, I understand, on the UDOT work. It's been done down by the freeway, on the interchange. Um, that, eh, have you heard anything else?
I actually requested a, a update from UDOT and I've not heard back from them, but obviously you can tell that it's a. It's a pedestrian protection mechanism that they're putting in there for the islands. Um, I, I understand that there's been some, some comments on that. Uh, I, I can't see that it's great or not great. I believe it is good for safety. It's probably, uh. A, a little bit more of a, of a buffer for the pedestrians as they're crossing there. If you've ever crossed at that intersection going under the freeway. It's a long distance and so they, they made it, th- th- this is a protective island for those that are crossing pedestrian lines and so. I, I, I think it's a, a good thing that way. It can be a little bit of a hindrance to things like snow piles and maintenance and traffic. But a- again, I believe it's a, it's a good move for pedestrian.
But with that said, it is, um, historically, we didn't have the best relationship lately. We've, we've been much. Better having a good communication, interchange, exchange with the, with UDOT. This one was, we were blindsided with. We just didn't know it was even coming.
The cattle guard all over again.
Is, is the gate fixed on the cattle guard yet?
They just removed it.
Oh, really?
So now.
So the deer can walk right down the sidewalk onto the freeway?
So, yeah, they just.
It's a new pizza and not a deepak.
Took it off.
How many ministries do we have in Utah that have a cattle guard on it? Yeah, I don't think there's very many.
Hence, we are rural Utah.
Yeah, hey, if you wanna be rural, here we go. Uh, spring cleanup. I had, I received a few questions on that and you answered it, uh, so it starts April twenty-fourth?
Do you want the dates on that again?
Yes, please.
Yes, um, uh, let me get back to my texts. Those dates are, the city cleanup will be the last weekend, weekends of April, April twenty-fourth through May first, except Sunday. Weekend, um, weekdays will be open from ten to six, Saturday, nine to five, both Saturdays. All dumpsters will be located in the city's landfill on Lark Lane. It will be staffed so that we can help direct where metal should go, where. Um, garbage should go, where limbs should go. And, um, that, that really helps. In, in the past, we've had dumpsters all over the community. And it just becomes a nightmare overloaded and Public Works is going out there trying to pound it down and all sorts of things go in that are inappropriate. Um, it's, it's just much easier to, to have that at the landfill. And we are talking about potentially having two, one in the spring and one in the fall. Date, dates for the fall are have not yet been established. Thank you, Councilmember Miller, for recommending that.
You're welcome.
Good idea.
That's all I have. Is there anything else?
Um, uh, Assistant City Manager, Norm Bigley, was on, uh, television this week. Just. Thought I would share that.
It had nothing to do with a burning vehicle.
He was on the television show County Seat, which is a rural programming.
Cool.
And interviewed, um, along with a council member from, from Woodland Hills, so.
Was it a contest? Well, did you win?
I, there was making a win, so.
Discussing issues of.
The council member from Woodland Hills is.
Yeah, Kerry Malkovich, uh-huh. And so we were discussing, uh, resilient communities and how we can, you know, make our communities. More resilient through planning and finding appropriate funding for projects and that kinda thing, so.
Perfect.
Alright, if nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
You have a motion by Councilman Miller, do you have a second?
Did we?
No, huh?
We do have need for a, a very quick executive session.
Dang, I missed that. Have a very quick one?
Very quick.
Alright, we pulled withdraw those motions and look for a motion to go into an executive session. Real estate?
Uh, land acquisitions, strategy.
As he said. You have a motion by Councilman Miller, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mekum. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. I guess those who need to be here.